Good morning. The Budget and Appropriations Committee is reconvening the budget hearings for the following bills. Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the City of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2019 year. The Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2019, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, providing for estimated billings pursuant to state law, and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. And lastly, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2019, providing for certification of the approved budget to the State Superintendent of Schools, and providing for a special effective date. We've been joined this morning by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, Councilwoman Middleton from the 6th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, I'm sorry, Golden State Warrior, Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. We've also been joined by Karen Stokes and Karan Banks from the Mayor's Office, Ms. Carolyn Sturgis from the Budget Department, Kara Kuntz from the Council President's Office, and Rebecca Tab, also from Council President's Office. This morning, we'll be hearing presentations from the Health Department. Dr. Nguyen, if you would go ahead and take the mic, and if possible, if you could keep your presentation as brief as possible, and then we will have questions from the committee. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you very much Chairman Pinkett, and thank you to you and to Council President Young, Councilwoman Snead, Councilwoman Middleton, and Councilman Stokes for being here today. I know you've had a long week now of hearings, and so very much appreciated. As I start my presentation, I'd like to introduce members of my team who are here. I'm so proud of the team that I get the opportunity to work with every day. I'd like to introduce in order, this is Malcolm Green Haynes, who was previously with the Finance Department, and DGs is now our Chief of Finance and Admin within the Health Department. We have our three deputies seated here, Hyung Tan Deputy for Aging and Care Services, Jennifer Martin, who is our deputy overseeing Population, Health, and Disease Prevention, and Mary Beth Haller, who is our Acting Deputy overseeing Youth Wellness and Community Health. And then we have members of our team who are here as well, who I can introduce in order.
Yes, and if they could just either stand or just signify by raising their hand so we can...
Perfect, so I'm going to introduce in order Francine Childs from School Health, Jessica Speaker from Environmental Health, Jonathan Gross from Youth Violence Prevention, and Greg Cilio, Chronic Disease Prevention. From our maternal and child health team, we have Stacy Tuck and Kathy Watson. Dr. Shelley Chu is the Senior Medical Advisor, Kristin Raskowsky is my Chief of Staff. Behind her is Dr. Deana Greenbaum, who oversees clinical services, Dr. Patrick Choak for HIV and STD Services, Mary Grace White, Acute Communicable Diseases. Then we have our chiefs in Aging, we have Natasha Ramberg, Teresa Jeter-Cutting. We have Liz Briscoe sitting in for Molly Martin, who is on maternity leave. And then we have our Assistant Commissioner for Aging and Care Services, Eloise Main. Going to our back row, we've got Steve Radosevic from Finance, Jeff Ambrose Deputy Chief of Staff, Jose Rodriguez, who is our Overdose Director, Norentan Luengrath, my Special Assistant, and Ms. Mona Rock, who is our Public Information Officer.
Thank you, and we've also been joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, and I neglected to mention probably the most important person here this morning, Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee.
Wonderful, and Paul Neber is sitting on the other side, I forgot to introduce him. He is our Legislative Director, formerly with Council Services, and he will be advancing my slides today. So, I would like to start with the next slide, which is our brief agenda. I'm going to make this very short. We'll talk about State of Health, Healthy Baltimore 2020, accomplishments for this year, our funding priorities, and then end with your questions. Our next slide shows the Health Department, which you all know very well, we are the oldest Health Department in the country, secured since 1793. I illustrate that we have a long history of innovation to talk about our funding structure, which is that unlike our counterparts, less than 20% of our funding comes from city general funds. It allows us to innovate, because we have many funding sources from the state and federal government in particular, but especially with the federal climate as it is, it does put us into an amount of jeopardy, given the uncertainty of the federal climate. Our principles, we go to where people are, we protect the most vulnerable, we understand health as it relates to all issues, and we also focus on science and a results-oriented action. Our next slide will show the State of Health in Baltimore City. I want to illustrate just a couple of things here. You all know about the 20-year difference in life expectancy depending on where children happen to be born in our city, which is these profound geographical disparities. Then I also want to talk about overdose and addiction. We can't speak about health in our city without addressing that last year in our city, over 700 people died from overdose. And I want to mention the numbers, in particular as it relates to fentanyl. Back in 2013, 12 people died as a result of fentanyl. In 2017, that number is over 500. So when we talk about where this epidemic is going, it's, we can't separate it from the fentanyl that's now being trafficked in and is killing our residents at record numbers. I'll talk about what we're doing about it. But I wanted to highlight, in the next three statistics you see, the babies born with low birth weight, HIV, and food access, they also illustrate the profound racial disparities that exist in our city. And I think it highlights our point that health cannot just be about the healthcare services you get, it's also about the environment that we live in, and that for us, it's not just a health issue, it's also a justice issue as well. Our next slide illustrates Healthy Baltimore 2020, which I presented to council before. And I want to illustrate this mainly to say, we have race equity inclusion, specifically focusing on disparities. Our vision for Healthy Baltimore 2020 specifically calls out the goal of cutting health disparities in half within the next 10 years, because we don't think that we can improve health in our city without cutting disparities as it relates to race, and gender, and geography. Our next slide, the next four slides actually will show our accomplishments for 2017 and 2018, and I use these to illustrate why our funding is as such for FY '19. Be More for Healthy Babies, in our maternal and child health program I'm so proud of, we have over 150 partners in our city. We have achieved remarkable outcomes that have been recognized by the U.S. Surgeon General Department of Health and Human Services, including a 38% reduction in infant mortality since 2009, and an incredible unprecedented 61% drop in teen birth rates since 2000. But we face a lot of challenges. You all know about the ruling, or the decision by Health and Human Services to cut our funding by $3.5 million for evidence-based reproductive health education programs at our middle schools and high schools. Under the direction of Solicitor Davis, we sued the Trump Administration, and so far, the ruling has been in our favor. But I don't know what's going to happen, right? We don't know what appeals might occur, and we also don't know what cuts might be coming down the pike when it comes to issues that may not be in line with the federal government's priorities. School Health, we also, so many of our students depend on school health services. School Health Services also dramatically reduce absenteeism, because if students can see their nurses, or nurse aides, or nurse practitioners in their schools, they may not have to miss a day of school, and their parents don't have to miss work. There were almost 270,000 visits for students in school health and FY '18. We started a program two years ago to provide glasses free of charge to all kids who need them, I mean, pretty simple and basic intervention. We've already served over 35,000 students and provided over 5,000 kids with needed eye care. Our vaccination rate in 99.8% is among the highest in the country. On our next slide, you'll see the work that we're doing around substance abuse and mental health. Two and a half years ago, I issued a blanket prescription for naloxone, the antidote, to every resident in our city. And our most recent numbers are that we have trained almost 40,000 everyday residents to save lives. And everyday residents have saved, I think our last numbers are over 2,100 lives, just in the last two, two and a half years, which I think is remarkable. I mean, we are losing unfortunately more people than ever to this epidemic, but we also have to save a life today to have any chance for a better tomorrow. We have a citywide fentanyl task force in response to the issue of fentanyl, because fentanyl is 50 to 100 times stronger than heroin, and is now being mixed in. And now we're doing hot spotting in real time, we're identifying where these overdoses are occurring, and targeting outreach in those particular areas. But that outreach is not going to be effective until we treat addiction as the disease that it is. And so I thank members of City Council, under the Mayor's leadership, that we've been able to now start the pilot for the stabilization center, which is the beginning of our 24/7 ER for addiction and mental health. Under the Mayor's strong leadership for this, we recently just announced that we'll be doing levels of care for hospitals. In the middle of an epidemic, it doesn't make sense that any healthcare institution can say, "We don't treat addiction." Right, I mean, we would never say, we would never accept it if a doctor said, "Oh, I just don't treat patients with diabetes," or "Our hospital doesn't treat patients with cancer." But that happens unfortunately all the time. Thankfully, our hospitals in Baltimore are leading the way with changing this culture. So we're now going to be rating our hospitals, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, the same as we do for any other service, because that's what's needed in the middle of an epidemic. And all 11 of our hospitals have signed on to this Levels of Care Program, which I think is remarkable. And now, our hospitals are leading the way with having screening for addiction for every patient who comes to the EDs. Many of our hospitals now offer buprenorphine treatment on demand in the EDs. We have peer recovery specialists right in our EDs. I mean, these are really remarkable things that we're doing, and I wanted to share that with you to highlight the work of our hospitals and the leadership of Mayor Pugh in these efforts. We're also starting a hub-and-spoke model for primary care, so that we're treating addiction in the primary care setting as well. Thank you to the council for helping to publicize the public education efforts with our 24/7 phone line, our Don't Die campaign. We've done a lot in this area, but unfortunately, again, I come back to funding, and this is not a city issue, this is a federal issue. The President declared a state of emergency around opioids. We have not seen any effect for us on the ground. We're still having to ration naloxone. We have received some money from the state, from the federal government, with the previous federal administration, but those are still things that we cannot depend on, on an ongoing basis, and so that's still a major challenge for us. Our next slide will show the accomplishments when it comes to disease prevention, which is a, this slide is really our core services. Clinical Services, as you know, we have two clinics, Eastern and Druid. Together, we provided 18,000 visits for STD Services. HIV testing and linkage to care is a core part of our work, as is home visiting for asthma and lead prevention in our children. Then we have what we call our core public health services, too. Last year, we investigated 35 outbreaks, and I hope that you haven't heard about these outbreak investigations. You know, it's been said that public health works when we are invisible, right? You haven't heard in the news about huge outbreaks of Legionnaires, or Ebola, or whatever, right? And it's the reason is that our team here worked to prevent these issues from ever becoming a problem. So, 35 outbreak investigations, 23,000 calls for service for animal control. We also have done over 5,000 environmental inspections so far, just in 2018, and our environmental health team is a core part of the Mayor's Violence Reduction Initiative. Again, challenges, I go back to the uncertain federal climate, we have the expiration of multiple grants, and uncertain if our grants in HIV, or STD, or disaster preparedness are going to be renewed. That's an, that's an area of concern to us. Our final slide, when it comes to our accomplishments, is the, what we do around caring for our most vulnerable residents. All of you have been integrally involved in our efforts to expand food access. We've expanded our Baltimore market sites down to 14 virtual supermarkets and 25 healthy corner stores. We have now launched our Billion Step Challenge, it started last summer, and is going to continue this year. And you've seen, every day when you walk into City Hall, you see that sign for the Billion Step Challenge, and I thank all of you for helping to promote it. Senior Programming, as you see, Aging and Care Services is a core part of our work here at the Health Department. Some, just some of our efforts include delivering almost 450,000 meals, and serving congregant meals for seniors. We also launched a falls prevention strategy, working with our hospitals to get information about where it is that our older adults are falling. We know that 25% of older adults who fall and break their hips will die within a year. And it's not just a matter of health, it's also a matter of social isolation, and the impact that it may have on the seniors' families. I mean, many of our seniors and older adults are caring for others, their spouses, their grandchildren, and so this is something that affects generations. We have reached in this year 62,000 unique seniors in our city for services. Finally, I want to highlight our work in violence prevention. You all know, and I'm so grateful to the Mayor for her support, her strong support of Safe Streets. The expansion of Safe Streets is something that we absolutely believe in, that Safe Streets is an evidence-based program to reduce conflict and violence. All of you have been such strong advocates for Safe Streets, too. I am 100% confident of the leadership of Director Drew Vetter as we transitioned our Safe Street Service into MOCJ. Our teams have also been working very closely with Director Vetter and with the Mayor's Office in transitioning Safe Streets, and ensuring that the public health model that we know to be so effective is continued. In violence prevention, we also see, we also do a lot of work around trauma-informed care, and interrupting the cycle of violence and trauma, and in particular, also focusing on how all the work that we do is violence prevention, right? I could argue that reducing lead poisoning in our children, providing glasses for our children, help to keep kids in school and reduce violence. I mean, all these things are in our public health understanding of what it means to reduce violence. That takes me to my last slide, which is our funding principles. I'm not going to go over each of our services line by line, I don't think you would want that, but our funding principles overall are fourfold. First is that we have to maintain our critical services to protect health and well-being. I mean, that is what we're here to do. Second also is that we have to ensure that we meet state and federal mandates. That's what we have to do, to maintain accreditation, to receive our state and federal funding, so that's what we have to do. Then third, there are potential cuts, we have to, and real cuts. We have to mitigate the effects of the cuts as much as possible, especially since we're so heavily funded by state and federal and other non-city sources. And then, we also want to continue our history of innovative partnerships and focus upstream as early as possible, helping with our children, and really emphasizing that cutting disparities and focusing on equity have to be a core part of our mission. So with that, I thank the council for your keen attention, for your leadership, for your support, and for all that you're doing to help us to promote health and well-being, and I look forward to any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. We've also been joined by Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, and Poetry Deal from the Mayor's Office.
Good morning, Chair.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. I'm Dr. Nguyen. I'm in the Single Audit Report book on page 37, and a single audit report finding found a compliance and internal control deficiency over reporting for the aging program. The audit report found that expenditures were understated by $744,141 from the city's accountant record. This is a repeat finding from 2006, which showed $697,017 in questionable costs. Finding in 2016 state that this finding, this finding is a repeat finding of 2015. So my question is, Baltimore City Health Department response state that you began developing policy procedures to prevent misreporting in grant accounting. Can you provide this committee with a written copy of your procedures? And how can we be sure that you had properly addressed accounting problem for the aging program and other health programs? And why has it taken over three years to address accounting issues? And will a similar accounting issue be listed in the single audit for the year ending June 30, 2018? I'm going to be dealing with this single audit reports.
Thank you very much, Council President. I would like to turn to our Chief of Finance and Admin to answer your question, although the first part of your question is absolutely yes, we can, we can and will provide a written copy of everything that we are doing to address this. And I have another response, but I would like to turn to Malcolm to first begin.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. The, one of the primary...
Let me take the mic off.
Sure. In response to some of the issues related to the audit findings with the Department of, with the Aging and Care Services, one of the challenges historically related to our fiscal team has been some delays in reporting until year-end on a lot of the grants that the department receives from the Department of Aging. In the last few months, over the last seven months, or eight months or so, we've reversed the practice of reporting at a year-end basis, and have begun the practice of updating and making our reporting accurate on a quarterly basis, meaning we report quarterly to our granting agencies based off of actual expenditures. This is a relatively new practice, and it's been instituted across our fiscal team, and so moving forward, we don't anticipate as many audit findings, but that, that has been an issue that we've had to deal with historically, but it's since been corrected. And like Dr. Nguyen said, we will forward you our revised standard operating procedures related to grant reporting.
May I add?
Well, I hesitate in three years to address this.
I think one of the, one of the main reasons that it's taking so long to address a lot of these issues is, there's been a little bit of, there's been high turnover in our fiscal team in some instances, that has prevented some, a level of consistency in the way that we report things, so that's been one of the, one of the main challenges. So again, one of the things that we want to do is ensure a level of consistency and standard work moving forward on, within the fiscal team.
Well, would this be another issue in 2018?
Like I said, so the standard operating procedures have been instituted over the last seven months or so, so there still may be some remnants of delays in reporting, but moving forward, we don't anticipate in subsequent audits.
Okay.
May I add, Council President, when I first started at the Health Department now three and a half years ago, I found, I think as many of you have find in when you first start in a position, that there were a lot of things that just, that needed assistance, right? I mean, there are, and I had done initially a listening tour with our, with our team here, and many of them, actually all of them said the same thing, which is that we need our back office operations, our infrastructure when it comes to finance, HR, to be significantly improved within the Health Department. And when I looked into what that meant, what was happening is that, so we are so heavily grant-funded, right? Over 80% of our funding comes from grants. We're very effective at getting grants, which is great for the city and the residents that we serve. The problem is that as we get more and more grants, we haven't increased the number of people working in back office operations. So we, even though our budget has grown because of all the, I mean, we have hundreds of grants that we're managing, we manage over 50% of the city's grants, but we have very few staff when it comes to finance, when it comes to HR, and therefore, they aren't able to get money out the door. I mean, this is a big problem, right? We can't get money out the door, we also can't, we also don't have enough staff to address audit findings going back a decade. And so when I first came on, I said, "This is, we can't do this, I mean, this is not effective." So we've instituted certain things. For example, we have a grants policy that we will be happy to send to you about which grants we even apply for. We were applying for grants that were worth $20,000, $30,000, which may seem like a lot, but if that's taking up a whole person's time to manage those grants, then we're not able to successfully manage the grants that are $2 million. So we've started a streamlined process for how, which grants we even apply for in the first place. I then hired, two years, two and a half, two years ago, I hired a Chief of Finance and Admin, who was Ryan Heminger, and is Malcolm's predecessor, to really overhaul our process, and we started a process for having an indirect rate. All institutions apply indirect rate, so that you can now have your back office functions, right, your admin staff be increased as you get the rest, I mean, we have great program staff, we're delivering services on the ground, but they cannot be effective in their work unless we can hire people, and unless we can get these grants processed. So, as you know, things take a lot, take some time to get through, and we're in the process of working on all of these issues. I want to assure you that this is our top priority, and when Malcolm was first intervening for his job, he's been on board, I think now, for a month and a half or so, but when he was first interviewing for his job, I said to him that this is our top priority. We have to get all of our ducks in a row, we cannot have these outstanding audit findings, we cannot put our city at jeopardy for not receiving grants in the future. These are things that we've already addressed, we've contacted all of our partners on the state and federal level, we're working closely with them. We know this is something that will be addressed, and we'd be happy to share with you all the various steps that we've taken to emphasize how big of a priority this is, understanding that these are issues that are many years in the making, and will not disappear overnight, but that we are taking active daily steps to address them.
Can I also add to that as well, is I believe in fiscal 2018, in the budget, there was also two positions added for a grant accountant as a result of those audit findings, so as those positions come online and they go through the onboarding process, that should also assist the agency as well.
Okay. My second question is Service 715, that's on page 41, you might not have that book with you. But the Single Audit Report finding 2017-008 found a compliance and internal control deficiency over earmarking. The report states that Baltimore City Health Department co-mingled funds for both in-home service and access service, and did not follow the requirement for earmarking. This is a repeat finding of 2016-019, which itself is a repeat finding of 2015-008. Can you provide this committee with the written procedures that you have implemented to prevent the co-mingling of funds in future fiscal years? And have you begun using separate account numbers for different funding sources? Are we going to see a finding in the 2018 Single Audit for co-mingling funds?
Council President, I'm not entirely sure what this, what this refers to, but I would be happy to have our teams go back and look into it.
It refers to the Single Audit Report.
And again, Mr. President, a lot of the audit findings that you'll find, you'll find a recurring theme in a lot of the auditing findings as it relates to health, and a lot of them are historical in nature, related to previous practices of the fiscal team. Again, the, moving forward, we have instituted some revised standard operating procedures, which we'll, which we'll be happy to share with you, and again, moving forward, I don't, the emphasis here is to avoid these findings moving forward, and we've instituted standard work and standard operating procedures to avoid those.
Okay, so, we want you to provide the written procedures that you implement.
Sure, absolutely.
To prevent this from happening again.
Council President, can you...
I'll give, I'll give all this.
Okay, so we'll note 67 and 68.
Okay, and on page 43, Single Audit Report finding 2017-009 found a compliance and internal control deficiency over cash management for medical assistance program. The report found that Baltimore City Health Department did not have proper controls to adhere to the cash management requirements under uniform guidance related to the time requirement for submitting quarterly reimbursement requests. The fact is that Baltimore City Health Department is not in compliance with the cash management requirement for MAPS transportation program. Can you provide this committee with the written procedures that you have implemented to prevent this issue from happening in the future? And are we going to see a repeat finding for this topic in future years?
And I believe this, if I heard correctly, this finding refers to our Medicaid transport program, and that particular program has been, there's been some challenges related to reporting on that program for some time now, and my team has, I've observed some significant challenges with that program myself. I've made, making, updating our processes and reporting related to Medicaid transport a priority within our team, and again, a lot of this is related to misreporting that has happened for years, leading up to this particular audit. And again, the reporting processes and the actual recording of expenditures and revenues related to this program have been revised as part of a division-wide update of our standard operating procedures. Again, this is, these are issues that have been historical in nature, and they've been accumulating over a number of years, but moving forward, we definitely have updated those processes, and will, will work to minimize exposure related to findings in the future.
Okay, I have like four more, but Mr. Chair, I'm gonna let you...
Okay, and I'll make certain to come back to you. Dr. Nguyen, my initial question is related to Service 717, Environmental Inspection Services. And for the Performance Measure related to Percentage of Mandated Food Service Facility Inspections Completed, it looks as though there that we failed to, for, I guess FY17, the target was 65%, but the actual came in at 40.2%. So, wanted to know why we didn't hit the target, and then along with that, if you could also... And then along with that, if you could also answer that when we look at FY18, target is eighty percent, but in FY19, the target is sixty-five percent? This particular budget calls for the additional two inspectors, but our percentage, target percentage is going down. Can you speak to that? And then come try to get all my questions in at one time. If we can, if you can also let us know, what was the number of mandated inspections? And what was the number completed? And I can repeat all of that, but.
Chairman Pinkett, I will turn to our acting deputy for, and who is also currently our Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health to answer this question, Mary Beth Haller.
Good morning, Council Chair. With regard to the hitting of the state mandated inspections, several years ago, we were actually using a different system for trying to quantify the actual number of completed inspections. This had been done by hand, and upon investigation, once we implemented an electronic system, there was a huge difference in the number of inspections. It went down. The reason is, it's a staggered approach to these inspections based on the risk factor for the type of establishment, where some are inspected every four months, there are others that are every six months, and still others that are inspected only every other year. Because of this, it was very hard to tell. We could count the number of inspections that we did, but we couldn't count whether or not we were actually doing them when they were called for. We wanted to find out, were we, not just counting the inspections, but were we doing them when they were called for? That led to this great reduction, down to forty percent. The state audited us, Maryland Department of Health, audited the section, the retail food service program in 2016, and based on the number of inspections, the number of facilities we have in the city, they surmised that we would need forty inspectors for the city of Baltimore in order to adequately meet this mandate. We have twelve food service inspectors, and this is the reason that the result is so low. In order to protect public health, however, because of the risk factor that the various establishments are assigned, we do the highest risk first. It still just counts as one inspection. It takes longer than a monitoring inspection, where we come in and only check for certain things, but the annual full compliance inspection, those we really, it's really important for us to do those if we're not going to be able to get to a place every four months. So we're prioritizing based on the risk to the public. What happens is, we end up with an honest answer, which is forty percent. It's not pretty, but it's real.
Do, and you know better than I do, do you think that it'd be appropriate to create a metrics that reflects our percentage of inspections on those high-risk establishments?
We could do that.
I mean, I think that would be beneficial to the public as well, to show, you know, that, as you say, that the establishments that are high-risk, we're meeting and exceeding, you know, the targets as it relates to those, because it seems like, I mean, those, that we've put the priority where it needs to be with the limited resources that we have.
We can certainly look into that for the measure.
Okay. And my second question is related to Service, Service 718. It measures both, I think, percentage of tobacco outlets checked for compliance with Baltimore City laws, and then also the percentage of tobacco outlets checked selling tobacco to minors. Do we have the numbers for the actual number of outlets that were checked each year, as opposed to?
So if I can, turn to our Assistant Commissioner to answer this question.
Yes, I'm going to actually give the question to the Assistant Commissioner for the program.
Okay.
Good morning, Council, thank you. I'll have to get back to you with the actual numbers. I mean, we're very limited as far as the number of stores that we can hit each year, just, you know, based on the capacity of our two inspectors, but there's about, I think it's fifteen hundred stores or so across the city, and we get to somewhere around half of that, but I'll get you those exact numbers.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'd like to know, you know, what are the numbers? What's the number that we've checked each year? Could we do the last three fiscal years? And do we collect that on where violations were found and the number of violations that were found each year?
Yeah, we can definitely do that, and we actually are in the process of implementing right now an interactive map, where you'll actually be able to go in and see where all the inspections were, what the results were, so that'll all be available. But as far as the actual number that we hit, I'll just need to pull those numbers from our database.
Okay, and so when do you think that that tool that you just mentioned would be available to?
I could get it to you now, it's, we just haven't made it public yet.
Okay.
There's no reason why I can't get it to you, we just have some, you know, things, visual stuff that we're working on, but the data's there.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilwoman Middleton?
Good morning, and thank you for what your team does constantly in this city. The Health Department plays a big role in our success in moving forward with human service needs within, in our communities, especially our most impoverished neighborhoods that have been neglected for many years. I noticed that we don't have an org chart, and I think it's important if we could, if the committee could get an organizational chart with, I guess, names and include the contact information is very important. So I'd like to request an org chart. And I know that, well, we've had previous, you know, agencies come in, and I remember we had the IT department presented to us, and they gave some of their accomplishments, and I, they talked about the improvement of hotlines, and they included, one of their successes was the hotline for, as you know, I also sit on the Aging Commission. They said that the hotline for, they made a statement in writing that one of the hotlines that has been successful was the hotline for aging, and I don't know, and I, so I wanted data to kind of prove that statement, so we're gonna be waiting for that. I don't know if you want to make a statement, if you notice that it has been improved. I know that at one of our meetings, we had a discussion about that in maybe trying to figure out ways to man that hotline and just improve services. Would you like to comment on that?
Certainly, and Councilwoman, I'd first like to thank you for your strong leadership, not only on the council, but also for women and for our Aging and Care Services Commission, so thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding the organizational chart, of course, we'd be very happy to provide it. It's also on our website at health.baltimorecity.gov. We will provide a copy to you, and of course, I'll emphasize too, that DePaul Nibber, as our Legislative Director, will be very happy at any point. I mean, it's not, it should not just be during the council hearing that we can address your concerns, and if there are any questions about audits or org chart or anything else, please feel free to contact us at any point about that. Regarding hotline for Aging and Care, I'd like to turn to Deputy Commissioner for Aging and Care Services, Young Tan.
Thank you for your question, and thank you for your leadership, Vice President Middleton, on both the council and on the Commission on Aging. In terms of our hotline, it's called the Maryland Access Point 396 care number. We are one of six hotlines for aging services in the country that is open twenty-four hours. We staff, we get about twenty-one thousand to twenty-six thousand calls annually from older adults and their caregivers. I believe one of the successes that we've been able to obtain over the last two years is our wonderful partnership with United Way 211. We just received a half a million dollar grant from the Weinberg Foundation to update our infrastructure for the MAP access line in order to be able to be more efficient and be able to provide more services to older adults. The hotline rolls over to United Way 211 after hours, and so at any point in time, older adults are able to call 396 CARE at any time of the day to receive services. If there's anything I can answer additionally, I'd be happy to provide that.
That's fine. And you can scratch the org chart, it just wasn't in our packet, and we just received it. This is dated April eighteenth, would that be the most updated one?
I believe so. We will check and make sure that our newer hires, for example, Malcolm, are reflected there.
Okay. And then my last question, I have been asking all or most of the agencies, I guess, an update on job creation within your agency, particularly apprenticeships and connecting to high schools. We know that the health field is, there's shortages all over, and I'm passionate about apprenticeships within the Health Department, for example, and trying to capture those students in jobs that don't necessarily need college degrees, and, but a good government job right out of high school is a good start and a pathway with good benefits, and we're in desperate need of creating those kind of jobs. Are you doing anything, or have already started something in that perspective?
Councilwoman, thank you for asking this question. The apprenticeship and pipeline issue is a key priority for me, not only in my job, but previously. I was a medical educator, and I'm, you know, it's, I'm always astounded by how few people know about careers in public health. And it's actually quite upsetting, you know? People think about health as healthcare, right? And so they know about being a nurse, or a doctor, or a social worker, but they may not know about working in public health, and that we have nurses and doctors and social workers in the Health Department. And so we've done a number of things, including that we've started a Public Health Leadership Academy. The Public Health Leadership Academy is for youth, so it's for high school students who are coming through youth works, for college students. We have internship programs that run across the year with all of our institutions in Baltimore City, Morgan, Coppin, UB, et cetera, to have interns that are placed within the Health Department throughout the year. We have dozens, if not hundreds, coming through. We, the Public Health Leadership Academy also is a standardized training, because it used to be that we would, people would have interns, but they only learn their very specific portion of the Health Department, right? If they're placed in maternal and child health, they know maternal and child health, but they have no idea that we also do animal control, environmental inspections, and everything else. And so we have now that standardized training. We also have a Baltimore Core Fellows Program. We partner with Baltimore Core, so that we hire four or five fellows every year, and actually, the person who formerly led our Public Health Leadership Academy, or who is leading the Public Health Leadership Academy is a former Baltimore Core Fellow herself. And many of our Baltimore Core Fellows have actually gone on to other positions within the Health Department, including as the Director for Opioid Policy, as our Chief Policy and Engagement Officer, and Director of Special Projects, among others. In the meantime, we're also working on an apprenticeship program. Many of our positions require certain work experience that may be difficult to get, or bachelors, but actually, they may need more work experience than school experience. And so we're looking into how we can establish that, including especially for our sanitarian, animal control officers, and other positions where work experience and on-the-job training would be really important. So I'm excited about updating you next time, and to working with you to further publicize the work that we're doing.
Thank you for giving those examples, and I did suggest to, yesterday, the Finance Department that maybe they could devise, because I noticed with some of the agencies, they really don't know what the apprenticeship process, and how to create, and actually create an apprenticeship process on paper, you know, tracking and trying to fit that in your budget. So I asked Finance to actually create a way where that could help the agency get a path financially, because you are, you know, it's a job-paid experience as they're going through that process. So hopefully, that piece of paper can help, and I gave them a contact, because in the city, they, we do have a apprenticeship specialist, and this was, has been a longstanding position where the person, they had been working for a long time with apprenticeships in DPW and transportation and so on. So hopefully, you, your office can get a hold of that, and that can help guide you in how to fit that. Even if we start with one person, at least it's a pathway and it's a start. So thank you for giving some suggestions on some of the job specs of how, you know, what exactly, what exact subject matter you would use for an apprenticeship. And I'll stop my questioning there.
So we've been joined by Councilman Burnett from the Eighth District, Councilman Stokes.
Good morning, Dr. Nguyen. This is Agency Detail, Volume Two, Page 146, MOCJ Service, City Watch. The budget shows the largest increase in funds from Bloomberg for the gunshot detection units, license plate readers, and CCTV cameras. It also shows a cut of four-hundred-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-forty-three for monitoring and maintenance. Well, this cut, to maintain its impact, the city's ability to maintain the upkeep of the new resources that we have received from Bloomberg.
Councilman, I'm not sure that I know.
I'm sorry, which?
To answer, I think it may be within the MOCJ budget?
Just disregard it. Let me ask you a question in terms of senior programming and the rec centers, those kind of programs, because I know at one time, the senior program had a separate agency, and it was, I guess it was transferred over to the Health Department. We had a conversation, and I've been talking to Mr. Moore from Wreckin' Parks. Can your senior program, along with myself and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, we've been talking about, how can we incorporate some of your senior programs into the rec centers? Because we have a lot of rec centers, but we need to reach out more to our seniors to provide some service to them also.
Councilman, thank you so much for that excellent question, and I would be remiss not to acknowledge you and Councilwoman Clark, and really, all the members of the council for your wonderful work with Aging and Care Services, not only by serving on the Commission as Councilwoman Middleton does, but all of you for all the work that you do. You know, our core public health principle is to reach people where they are, and it's in senior centers, but you're right, that seniors may also be accessing services in other places. And so we would love to work with you to discuss how we can incorporate more of our services for our seniors in other sites across the city, including in Wreckin' Parks. Mayor Pugh's, one of her mottos, which I cite a lot, is collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. She challenges all the city agencies to meet and think outside the box and the boundaries of what we're normally bound with, and I know that I and Director Moore and our teams, in fact, have had multiple conversations about the cross-disciplinary nature of our work. As an example, we recently did a preparedness exercise where we modeled what it would look like if we had an outbreak, and Wreckin' Parks was a key participant in that effort. We certainly will want to talk more about senior programming. We've done a lot of work around overdose prevention and the locksome distribution, together with Wreckin' Parks and DPW and other people you would not normally think of as partners in these efforts. I will say specifically for senior, for senior work, so many of our services under Aging and Care Services directly relate to medical, transportation, to providing food and meals. These are federal and many times state grants that are, that do make sense to be served within Aging and Care Services. But that said, there's a lot more collaboration that can still be done, and I would love to seek your advice about how we can best do that.
And just one more, about, I guess, in the late nineties, I started a program called the Oliver School Base Asthma Program. Back then, it was in four elementary schools, and it taught the kids in a classroom setting about asthma, it taught their parents to look for signs of asthma, and we had health community workers that would go to the houses and check on the kids. Unfortunately, one of your predecessors cut it a little while ago, but I was reading in a pamphlet about asthma. Has there been an uptick, and if it is, can we talk about how we reach out more about asthma? Because a lot of kids miss a lot of time from school and end up in emergency room.
Thank you very much, and the question about asthma is something that is professional and personal to me. I grew up with childhood asthma, very severe. I mean, I was intubated multiple times and was often in the ER several times a week, and so it's something that I know intimately as how much it affects the entire family. I mean, my family had to, my mother had to leave work, you know, to take, and what did that do for her job and job security, too? And it resulted in me and so many of our kids missing school unnecessarily. And so what we're doing is threefold. The first is that we are working with our local hospitals to identify which are these students who are repeat utilizers of our emergency department services, understanding that what they need, and I've treated patients in the ER who come in all the time with asthma, what they need is not necessarily another inhaler or a shot of steroids. Maybe they need... Maybe they need that. But really, what are we doing when we're sending them home and they're living in a house with a lot of mold and other factors that may contribute to poor health? Or everybody in their house is smoking? But that's something that, that we can do, that we can have an interaction. So we're working with our hospitals. The second is that we're working with our schools. As I mentioned, with school health, many of the visits to school health suites are for administration of inhalers. For our school-based health centers, they can be a primary care source for our, for our, for our students as well. And so that's another major, another major way for us to cut visits. And finally, we do have an asthma home visitation program where we visit homes and look to see what is in the home, right? Is there a level of remediation that we can do? Is there education that, that, that we can provide on, especially on smoking cessation? I think also for all of you, smoking cessation, it's not just with asthma, it's also cancer and heart disease. And if you stop smoking now, you reduce the risk of heart disease by 50% in just that first year. So it's something that I hope that all of you in the council will help us to spread the word about.
Can you send that information about your home visit for asthma? Do you have, thank you.
To, to send, to say more or to send it?
Send it to the committee.
To send it, yes. We, we would be happy to do that. And Greg, who runs the program, will, will put together the information.
Thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Dr. Nguyen, thank you and thank you for your team for being one of the best and brightest agencies for the city of Baltimore. I, a couple of questions for the first round. First and foremost, because we've seen have a history of cuts to, to great programs, for example, Operation Safe Kids, that's been cut by our governor, and then also with the everyday potential from a tweet from the President of the United States to cut any and everything, do we have a plan for how we can mitigate and carry on file services if the President would decide to make more cuts like the ones he made to some of the programs already?
Councilman Scott, that is a terrific question. I was just at a meeting with my counterparts across the country, who are the health commissioners in other major cities, Chicago, LA, San Francisco, et cetera. This is the number-one topic of conversation every time we get together, because we all face the same challenges. And part of the challenge is that we have no idea what cuts are coming. I mean, the, the cut for our team pregnancy pre-prevention program came out of the blue. It didn't even came, it didn't even come, by the way, as a funding cut. We received a notice, it's a five-year grant. We received a letter just saying this grant is now three years and not five years. And we thought it was a clerical error and contacted them and said, this is no mistake. This is, this is actually a cut. I mean, some of our grants are expiring, just because they, they naturally expire. There are ongoing grants that are expiring. We have no idea if they're going to be continued, and we don't know if that funding source will come from, from elsewhere. And so I would say on our part, it's hard to have a plan without knowing what may come our way. The last thing that we would want to do is to compromise our key services. And that's another reason why so much of our work is focused on doubling down on our core services. I mean, I'm so fortunate every day to work with this great team. I think you all know that our team does so much with so little. I mean, we function on a shoestring budget, and people often have to do multiple jobs and wear different, many hats, and, I mean, we're way below standard and, and best practice for many of our core services. But we do what we can and focus on our high priority areas, as you heard, because that's what we have to do. And I think we will use anything at our disposal. We have, as you saw, sued the Trump administration to reclaim our funding. We will do that, and Solicitor Davis and Mayor Pugh have been such great champions of it. We will continue to pursue private grants, although everybody is seeking those sources, and private grants cannot replace what the state and federal government should, should be doing. We appreciate all of your advocacy in the state as well, ensuring that Baltimore City, you know, we are the hardest hit, right, by so many things, the opioid epidemic. We are a third of all the overdose deaths in the state. I have said over and over again, why don't we receive a third of all the funding when it comes to opioids in the state, right? These are all things that our advocacy and our joint advocacy is so important. And I really appreciate your asking the, the question, because it's something that keeps me awake every single night.
So Councilman Scott, Council President just has a follow-up to that question. But we've also been joined by Councilman Slifer from the 5th and Councilman Dorsey from the 3rd District, and Councilman Costello from the 11th Chairman of the Committee.
So in, in your previous statement, you said you didn't have enough people for the grant tracking, and now you're saying you don't have enough people adequate enough to do what we need to do. So how many people do you need, is the question? Could we like to know?
That's a wonderful question, and it depends on how we define public health. And, and I will, I will answer this question. So if you, the slides that we submitted, and the reason why they're, they're different from the BBMR slides, is that I wanted to include, and they're in your, it's the same information as in your budget books, so you'll see this in the budget books, too, that for our core services that are dependent on general funds, we don't have grant funds to support those, right? No, no grant from the state or federal government is going to pay for environmental health inspectors and sanitarians and animal control officers. I mean, that's what we have to do. Our city, because we have a lot...
Dr. Nguyen, I, I don't want to cut you off, but just tell me the number of people you need.
It depends on the services that we offer. We offer more services in public health.
But, Dr. Nguyen, you said that you need more people to do the job. So you need 10 people, you need 20 people, you need 30 people? I just want the number. I don't care what the service is, I just need the number.
I can't provide the number without discussing the service, because so many of our...
I'm finna quit.
Councilman Scott, I think you had one more question.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, before, I would like to make a request of the administration, especially Finance. So we, we seem to have contingency plans for funding for other things. For example, we have a contingency fund for when and if we lose a lawsuit with FOP, we have a contingency plan for when the lawsuits from GTF will come in. Can we develop one along with the health department for when and if President Trump wakes up and tweets that he's ending all health programs in the United States so that we can be prepared for that? We, we have to start to balance these things out. We can't just continue. We know that, as I've been saying the entire budget process, that we're thinking about giving the police department 100 ghost positions that we know they're not going to hire for. But Councilman Pinkett asked a question that I'm glad that I don't have to ask this year. We, we're struggling to let the health department get health inspectors that we know we can hire for immediately, and that we know that we can go out and do the work. So if we could get that from the administration, I think that, that would be great.
And if I can, if I can add to that, so we'll note that request. I think we also made the request yesterday with Budget that they provide that analysis as it relates, because we, we've got a lot of services that are critical to the city that are dependent upon grant funding, not just the health department, although we recognize that as well. And, and so we need contingency. We need to be preparing for if those grants aren't available. And so you're, you're absolutely right, Councilman Scott.
So my, my second question, Dr. Nguyen, is around Service 316. And I mentioned it a little bit, and just so that my colleagues know, it's actually on page 224 and eight in the Volume One of the Agency Book. So that we, we, we know that you're going from having 13 positions to eight, and we know that that's around the switch of Safe Streets from, from Health Department to MOCJ. But there's something else that I'd like to point out and ask, and ask you about. Again, if you look at it, we're actually only spending $793,000 of the city's dollars on, on this issue. And from where I sit here, it shouldn't be an either-or, right? It should be, we should be expanding Safe Streets and allowing the health department to continue to grow its youth violence initiative in Budget as well. For example, perfect example is Operation Safe Kids. Dr. Nguyen, if we were able to have city general fund, funding for Operation Safe Kids, could we operate that program? We know that it was ended a few years ago by Governor Hogan and his ongoing onslaught against anything related to Baltimore. But we, as a, as a local government, should have stepped up and probably still can step up to operate this program. We know that we're bringing ROKA to Baltimore, and we think that's a great thing. But we also know that ROKA is not going to have the, the full impact of reducing youth violence in Baltimore.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, I remember the end of Operation Safe Kids very well, because it was one of the things that I had to do when I first started in my role, was to attend their farewell. And it was really painful, actually, to watch all these social workers and case managers who knew that they were doing evidence-based work that was producing results and to have them go. I mean, this is something that was cut by the, by the state of Maryland. And, and we have explored over the years how we could bring this program back. The concern, though, is that the Department of, I, I'm, I'm going to say the state name wrong, but it's either DHR or GJS or, or something like that on a state level. We need their cooperation with this. I mean, we can't run this program without their cooperation. Their reason for the cut of the program is that, they said, it's duplication of services. But we don't know what those, what they mean by that and have not received further information about what that means. So to your question, I'm not sure if we can operate this program, even if we, even if we received funding. I would love to explore that in collaboration, of course, with MOCJ and with the mayor's office. I just don't know the answer to your question, because we don't know whether we can get the, the, the collaboration that we would require for, for this. But to your, the rest of your question about, about youth violence prevention, I mean, we see the work, Safe Streets, I, I mentioned how glad we are that the mayor is elevating it, and we have, she has, and Director Vetter has, of course, my 100% support in this process. We are, we will continue to work in this space because of the close tie between violence and trauma, and also the tie then with addiction and mental health and with all the other factors, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, if I could just, just add to that, Dr. Nguyen, I think the same thing goes for LEED, right? It says in the Budget Book that we're going to fund LEED this year from the city's budget, but then after the state picks up, we're not going to fund it. In my opinion, that should mean, when the state picks up, we should be expanding in the city based on what, the funding that we have. We can't just keep depending on the state to take over programs for us. We can make these investments into other agencies, into other things, and I don't want to harp on the police department and those positions, but we can make those same investments in things that are innovative, that we know have impact. That's my first two, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the, what is the plan for this year? I know Stacy's here from BHSB. Is there any plan to expand LEED beyond the Lexington market footprint?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there any plan to expand LEED beyond the Lexington market footprint for this year?
So I'll see if others want to answer this question as well. But Councilman, from our standpoint, we strongly believe in LEED, right? This is law enforcement assisted version based in Seattle. We would love to expand it. It's just a question of funding and incapacity. So I'll see if anybody else has...
Do we have Stacy from BHSB come up?
Just really quick, that funding that was included in it is just to continue the pilot program.
Okay. Do we have estimates for how much more funding we need to expand it? And as well as...
It's 97. Oh, sorry.
We have, do we have estimates for how much funding, how much funding we'll need to expand it, as well as prioritize locations to expand the pilot?
So we have been in talks about that. We did provide some information, and we were going to expand it a little beyond the current footprint, and I can send that to you.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, Ms. Chair.
Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education, which has great leadership, and that's not the issue at all. The issue is, aging is, there are a lot of very important issues that go with aging. That whole Falls Project is really, really important, and I'm glad it's being undertaken. Thank you for your support of it and leadership. But aging is not just a disease. And the reason for the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education, when it existed as that, is not only to provide health services, working with the health department, but to also provide legal services and to provide social services. I mean, social, like senior centers, but also all kinds of social opportunities. And in this day and age with technology on the rise and people staying younger as they grow older, we, just activities, volunteer activities, technical activities, mentoring, you know, in other words, we got a bunch of retirees who can contribute back to the city if, if there's a place where they can work with each other and develop their own programs to help kids and do a lot of things. In other words, the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education also includes, and this is what got me started on this lately, I'm always talking about it, retirement education, because we had an earlier hearing with, I don't know, I think it was Human Resources, don't quote me, somebody that said, well, you know, benefits and all, it's, it's hard because our retirees really don't have the background and they don't have the access to a lot of the information. And I know that the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education used to have an entire program on retirement education for city employees as they were moving into the year where they would be retiring. It was run, actually, by now-delegate Maggie McIntosh for many, many years. She's busy in other places, but I, my question is, well, let, let me make one more statement and I'll ask my question. I think that Commission on Aging and Retirement Education deserves to have the status that it did. I think the leadership is perfect for that to happen. And when I say the status, it was an important agency of the city of Baltimore. It was moved around to save money. That move did not work, and you all got everybody and the health department without having really a chance to, as far as I can tell, plan it. It just kind of happened in a couple stages. So this isn't a criticism. It's like, what got done? But it's not right. And it's missing a lot of opportunities in this city to engage a lot of people who are moving here to retire, first of all, who are retired but aren't ready yet to, for the health part of getting older. They're ready for the, what am I going to do with myself? How can I help? What's going on, kind of? And also then, the retirement education, it's complicated. You don't need like a master's degree in gerontology to know what your, what Medicaid's doing, what Medicare's doing, what happens if you, you know, if you're in the hospital, how long can you get therapy, all, all that kind of stuff? And who's there to help you if you don't have a daughter? So I, I'd like to say that I think that the director, I think Ms. Tan should be a member of the mayor's cabinet to show the importance of the service. Two, I think we should move in the direction of the commission being a city agency. I know that's not going to happen overnight. And third, I think there are components that, of the Commission on Aging, which are not health-related, which are essential to the rounding out and well-being of Baltimore City and a real, a real plus. And, and we're also leaving our retirees sort of hanging out there now without the kind of send-off they deserve to have a decent retirement and to keep in touch and have the access to know what we're doing to the benefits and to have something to say about them. So my question is, what do you think?
There's a lot to think about, but Councilwoman Clark, I like to address...
It's not like new.
Thank you for, for addressing these points. And, you know, I, I, I helped to care for my elderly father who retired about 10 years ago. He speaks limited English, and I remember how difficult it was to navigate that process. At that time, we had recently lost my mother, and to help him navigate that process of retiring, and actually, he recently fell, fell victim to, to a fraud scheme. And so I think I'm experiencing on all ends, the challenges that you're saying, right, that there are, it's health issues, but actually, we see health, and the health department is not just the absence of disease. This is the World Health Organization's definition of health, is that health is not merely about the absence of disease, it's about overall health and well-being. And that includes having access to social services, right? I mean, to social and social services.
Right. Social and social.
That's also a, a big part of, of people's well-being and connectedness in their community. So in the, in our Division of Aging and Care Services, under Hyung's leadership, we have done multiple things, including, I would... done multiple things, including, I would say, I should mention, through the strong support of Mayor Pugh, we brought up the issue to Mayor Pugh about having an inter-agency council and task force on aging, understanding that there's a lot that we may want to do, but we can't do. I mean, we may, our seniors may raise issues about public safety, but we can't, we can't alone figure that out. Or they may have concerns about housing or maybe experiencing homelessness. I mean, these are all things that we brought, or Wrenckin Parks too. Wrenckin Parks is also a critical, a critical part of our inter-agency council. I didn't even get one sentence into the proposal to the mayor when she said, absolutely, let's do it. And she's been such a strong supporter since then of it. Our new Director of Social Services in, who is also a, an aging expert and has been a key part to, to do this as well. In addition, we're working on a citywide plan around aging that's not focused, see, it's focused on health because our understanding of health is these social determinants. It's understanding that it's not just about healthcare, it's also about so many other things, about food access, about education, about literacy, about, about children's well, well-being and all of those are part of the citywide plan that we're developing with input from a variety of stakeholders across our city, but in particular through all of our city agencies. And so I, I want to say from our standpoint that the Division of Aging and Care Services works well within the Health Department because we have all the other infrastructure built around it. We have our finance and H R. We also have, many of the Aging and Care Services are reimbursed from the state and federal government. And we also have the infrastructure in place to process those and integrate those services. But as we spoke before with, with Councilman, with Councilman Stokes, there is a lot to be done following the mayor's mantra of, of collaboration so that we can ensure that we return the Division of Aging and Care Services to the glory that it was received.
Well, it's not so much glory, it's, but I like, you know, I like the idea. It's, there are a lot of people in the world, in our world, I guess I might be one of them in a lot of ways, that really, all right, let me, let me put it a different way. A lot of retirees, a lot of people in the city, they, when there was a commission of on, on Aging and Retirement Education, it had a place, it was the Waxter Center, it had a director that everyone knew her name, whoever she was, or there wasn't one, I think a man in there someplace, but mainly women, whoever that woman was at the time, everybody out there knew her name. And so it was like, like the way people know your name, doctor, and the way people know the mayor's name. Stuff like, like it was a place, it was a person, it was a recognition that they matter and where to go to figure out where to go. So it's, you can have inter-agency meetings and that's great, but that's not, I'm talking about something that has a, almost a physical recognition of the, what, of that population so that people without internet and websites and go look on the website can, will know, all right, go there and see Ms. Tan, you know, yeah, you know what I mean? And everybody will know her name, but, but there's no, it can't be buried forever in a, basically a Health Department where you guys are great. I'm not criticizing, I, I think you all do a marvelous job and I, I did grants for Hopkins and I can tell you, when I left there, there was $5,000 they couldn't find and thank goodness, it was found, or I think I would have been in jail instead of running for office. So I know what it's like, but, but this is something I'm passionate about and because it's such an important part of our city now, given the demographics and given the opportunity to attract people here by showing that there's a place for the active retirees to do, to, to get involved and help us.
Deputy Commissioner?
First off, thank you, Councilwoman Clark, for your leadership and your steadfast advocacy for seniors. It's been wonderful to work with you and your questions really is something that I think about each night as well. I think the infrastructure within the Commission on Aging is, is evolving. Since I've been here for the last two years, we at Aging and Care Services has, has found a, a very, we're at a very good place in terms of financial sustainability. There was a reason why the Commission on Aging and Retirement and Education Services was, was merged into the Health Department and a lot of it was financial, but a lot of it has to do with the support services that the Health Department is able to, to provide. And I know you know this. And so to, to respond to the, the, the role of the Commission on Aging, I'm, I'm proud to say that with Vice President Milton's leadership on the Commission on Aging, in addition to new appointments that the mayor has made, this has been the number one focus area on the Commission on Aging is to elevate and be steadfast advocates for Baltimore City. And I can see that happening over the next year with, with the members on the Commission on Aging and as Dr. Wen has said, that the mayor is in strong support of the Interagency Committee that we just reactivated. This was just a discussion that we had at the I A C meeting this week was what do we do, what can we do more for the members that the Health Department or Aging and Care Services can't touch? And when we talk about continued education opportunities, we do provide them within the senior centers and we do fund them to be able to, to, to do that work within the 14 senior centers. But we at Aging and Care also have volunteer opportunities. We have over 1,000 older adults volunteering in the 22 programs here at the Health Department. We also, my department, 25% of my team are 65 and over. We just celebrated Older Adults, Older Americans Month and we just recognized all of the older adult retirees who came back to the workforce just to be able to participate as members, as active members of society. So we are thinking about this and through the leadership of Vice President Sharon Milton on the, on the commission, in addition to very strong advocates now on the Commission on Aging, we're really thinking this through, how do we elevate it? And we, one of the steps was just to talk about reaching out to D H R, about continuing that retirement education benefits for this, for, for the city residents.
It's a great service and, and very much needed because people retire from here, they walk out the door and they're stranded. And they really need a place to get ready for being stranded so they know where to call. But thank you very much for all of your attention. I'm going to keep hammering on this till we get, one, I want to see the director have the status and respect for the community as a member of the cabinet.
Councilman Costello has a follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is that there's some issues with the way that Title III funds are dispersed to the senior centers. Is that, can you talk about that brief, like 30 to 60 seconds, please?
Sure. Thanks for your question, Councilman Costello. The Title III Fund is, is the most flexible federal funding under the Older Americans Act. That is the carryover dollars that President Young had mentioned that was found in the audit foundings and they're placed right now under the senior centers. They are inappropriately bunched up together as Title III funds under senior centers, but the carryover dollars support all of the core service programs for older adults such as guardianship, ombudsman, where we, we, we find kind of the areas of, we're, we're running a little bit of a deficit in the areas and so the Title III funds support that. It does not automatically go to senior center operations.
They're, they're not going to senior center?
A portion of them did because in 20, in 2017, we lost a state, senior center, state operation funds. As you see, there, there's a, a core loss in, in that funding and so Title III funds supplemented that, that loss in senior center operations and some of the Title III funds also go to access to care work.
Okay. And then my understanding is that some of the senior centers have vacancies in the executive director position, at least three of them?
Some of the vacancies, we are trying to actively fill the vacancies in, including the Waxter Senior Center Director position.
Okay. The, the senior center in Locust Point, the Allen Center, is, is in pretty bad shape. Can you and I speak directly after this hearing?
Absolutely.
To put our heads together in terms of what we can do with dispersment of funding and assistance, trying to identify a new executive director for that?
Absolutely, be happy to.
It's about 10:30. This panel is scheduled to 11:00. And I'd like to be able to come back through the committee, you know, for additional questions. So if we could keep our commentary as brief as possible and get to our questions so that Dr. Wen and her team can respond. And so, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Wen, for all that you do and to your staff. It's really always great partnering with the Health Department. I had a couple of questions around naloxone. It's one of the challenges I think we don't talk enough about in the city, over 700 deaths last year to overdose. One, one of the numbers that also struck me was that, is that many overdose? How many, if you know offhand, have actually been prevented through naloxone injections in Baltimore last year?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So how many, how many people were saved, I guess?
Oh, yes.
If, if 700 passed away, you know, what is, what are the folks who actually were resuscitated or saved through naloxone?
So we now have a billboard, if you pass by the, the Baltimore City Health Department, there's now a billboard. We, this is not an original idea. We, we got the idea actually from a couple of other counties across the country that started putting up a sign saying, here are the number of overdoses and here are the number of saves. To illustrate that, this is an emergency, right? Imagine if this many people were dying from, if over 700 people died from any other illness, this is an emergency, but it's not hopeless. There's something we're doing about this every day. And so in the last two and a half years, I don't have the data for 2017 in front of me, but in the last two and a half years, we have saved over 2,100 lives. I just looked at the billboard this morning and in that period of time, I think the number of lives lost was 1,000, it was over 1,000, but it was less than the number of people that we've saved in that same period of time. And by the way, the saves that we're counting, we are only counting the number of people saved by everyday residents. Everyday paramedics, EMS, the police, they're saving many lives, dozens of lives. If we counted all of them, it would be much higher, but we wanted to make the point that everyday residents are saving the lives of their community members, their family members and their friends.
And, and I noticed that in the budget book, it's indicated that there were over 6,000 residents trained. I guess, how do we, one, continue to raise awareness around this issue? I'm glad to hear about the billboards. Are there other opportunities for public awareness? And the second question I had was around challenges with access. I, I know, I've talked to your staff about sort of funding challenges, both some caused by the pharmaceutical industry, some caused by a lack of funding from the state and federal government. But on that end, I, I know that that requires a lot more advocacy, but what are some other things that we can do to increase, increase access for those everyday citizens who are saving lives?
These are both great questions. So the issue of training, we've done a lot regarding training and actually we just got legislation, not just, but we got legislation changed now almost a year ago to eliminate the training requirement, which means, so before it used to be that I issued a standing order, right? But you have to prove that you have training in order to get naloxone, which doesn't sound very hard, but it's one more step that you have to go through. So we eliminated it and now naloxone is essentially over the counter in pharmacies. The problem though is that pharmacies may not always know about this, about these efforts. And so actually at the moment, Jose Rodriguez, who is our new overdose director, he has been going out to do pharmacy outreach. We, we now know that we have to do this twice a year because even the pharmacies that were doing a good job six months ago, they may have new staff and the new staff may not be aware of, of all this, or they may just, you know, they have many other things to learn about. So that's one of our, one type of effort that we may not necessarily think of as important to access, but, or to training, but it, but it really is. So I would hope that all of you can help us to spread the message. Don'tdie.org, if you go to our website, you can get trained in five minutes. I have a short training video, you can watch it. And once you do that, you can go to any pharmacy and pick up naloxone. I would highly encourage, I mean, and all of you have been so great in every way with helping us to get information out about Don't Die, about our 24/7 phone access line, 4104 335175, right? All these, and all these things are, you all are leaders in the community. For me to say, please learn to, to save a life, maybe some people will do it, but for all of you to say it at every community meeting, for you to mention how many lives have been saved in your, by neighbors in your community, I think will be really powerful. Regarding the issue of access and naloxone, it is a major challenge. So if you have your own insurance, including Medicaid and, and, and medical assistance, you can get, you can get Narcan or naloxone for a small copay. With Medicaid, it's a dollar. If you have other private insurance, it could be $10, $40, just depends on, on your insurance. The problem is, we're asking you to administer naloxone on somebody else. And we never ask our firefighters to buy their own fire hose, right? I mean, it just, that doesn't make sense. So for us to ask our outreach workers to buy their own Narcan to save somebody else's life, just, it doesn't quite make sense. And many of our very vulnerable individuals, it's one more step for them to go to a, to a pharmacy. That's why our needle exchange van, and, and Dr. Patrick Chalk oversees that, is so important. On our needle exchange van, for every 11 units of naloxone that's, that's distributed, one unit is used to save someone's life, which I find to be totally incredible. So we need a lot more resources. We have gotten some funding from the state. We've gotten also some pass-through funding from the federal government, but we need a lot more. And that's something that, you know, I've, I joined some of our advocacy groups a, a couple of weeks ago to call for the federal government to directly negotiate the price of naloxone with the manufacturers. I hear from our outreach workers, I don't know if this is true, but I hear from the outreach workers that heroin costs $6. Naloxone costs the city $75. How does that make sense?
Councilman, can I, Dr. Wen, I have to leave for a meeting with Pete, but I, I want to thank you for everything your agency does. You are absolutely phenomenal. As far as I'm concerned, you're the best health commissioner in the entire country. I can't tell you how much I appreciate your senior team, especially working with Mary Beth, working with Greg, working with Jeff Amros and a number of others. So thank you guys very, very much and I'll, Deputy Commissioner, circle back with you shortly on the Allen Center thing. Thank you. I apologize, Councilman.
Thank you. I have the best team.
It's true. The, the second question I had is sort of a different topic. One of the, still addiction related, one of the things that we're, we're seeing is people are, younger kids are moving away from cigarettes, but there's an uptick in vaping. Can you talk some, about some of the dangers associated with that, some of the trends that you're seeing and then work that the Health Department's doing to educate people on the, the dangers of, of making that switch?
Yeah, we're very concerned about, about the issue of vaping, e-cigarettes. I mean, it's, it's complicated. It's not as straightforward as the smoking issue because unequivocally, smoking cigarettes is bad, right? I mean, it's associated with everything from cancer and heart disease to infant mortality. I mean, kids who are born, babies that are born in, in houses where people smoke are more likely to die. You know, it's, it's a big, it's a big issue. E-cigarettes are more complicated because some do say that it's a harm reduction approach. My, my mother-in-law is a very heavy smoker, a three-pack-a-day smoker. We've been trying to get her, I mean, she smokes around the clock and she has terrible emphysema, C O P D, but we're trying to get her to switch to e-cigarettes because if she can't quit using other methods, e-cigarettes could be a harm reduction approach in the same way that we don't support people using heroin, but we do needle exchange because we need to prevent hepatitis, H I V, right? That's a harm reduction approach. That said, there is growing evidence that flavored, the flavors in e-cigarettes and vaping, that when it comes to children, that it could be a gateway for them to use cigarettes later. And we're very concerned about that. I mean, the federal government and CDC and others have issued guidelines around this issue, around this. And we would love to work further with council to discuss opportunities for legislation that can protect our, our teens and our children here in Baltimore.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to keep that conversation going. This came up, I was discussing this with my wife the other day and we actually were walking behind someone vaping and it smelled like cotton candy. And I was like, that's pretty dangerous because it, it smells like good. It smells like something that you want. And I, and I know this is a challenge early on in, in trying to roll back the tobacco access was marketing the children and it just seems like one of those things that, you know, something like cotton candy or very sweet flavors can be very appealing for young people and I think that's a problem if we're talking about seeing that trajectory to when they are old enough to purchase cigarettes or if they, you know, or get someone to buy them for them, you know, that spectrum seems to be an effort to start them younger.
The, the city of Chicago- The City of Chicago has just done some really interesting things around, around the prevention of e-cigarettes to minors. So we'd love to explore that further with you. Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you. Councilman Slifer?
Thank you. So this happens to be the first hearing all week that I actually don't have any questions. And that's a testament to the great work that you do and your staff does, always communicating. And, I mean, you guys have a wide variety of services, whether it be the animal services, the noise services, everything that you guys are doing. And you're just extremely responsive. Your staff's extremely professional and responsive, and always thinking outside the box on how to resolve people's problems. And the speed in which they do it, and the way they communicate with the, with the council, at least, I speak for myself, really a second to none. And so, you know, I appreciate that. Appreciate the work of your staff. And it goes a long way when people call us and they have, you know, mosquitoes breeding in the alleyway, or they have, you know, a dead deer, you know, on their property. Those things go a long way when they see how quickly you guys respond. And even when there's an issue, you guys are always looking for solutions to that. And so I appreciate you always thinking outside the box and, and always roping us in and dealing with the council and allowing us to be a good partner with you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Before I go to Councilman Dorsey, I wanted to dovetail off of Councilman Burnett's comments as relates to youth smoking. I think it's even more critical for us to stay vigilant about this issue, because when we look at the budget, it looks like there was like a $250,000 cut to funding related to tobacco cessation. And so not only, you know, has this new element been introduced, but now we're reducing the funds to, to even address youth and address, you know, cessation of tobacco. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, Dr. Nguyen, but it looks like we're losing funds, you know, targeted in that particular area, I mean, when you look at the budget.
I'm turning to our budget now for 718. I think that we've maintained our current level of service for 718, or am I? I see. So this, so-
Oh, okay. It looked like it said tobacco cessation, and then minus 254,000? That's not correct?
Can you point us to the page that you're-
Oh, page 236, I mean, 237?
237, I don't have that.
Is that incorrect? Or am I just misreading it?
So my, so I know that on, on the part of city funds, that we, that we're not changing the city funds at all for the service line. I think that, and we will look into this to verify what I'm saying, I think that this may reflect changes from the state.
Right, that's, that's what I meant. I meant that we're getting less money from the state for that activity, and it looks like, as a result, and please correct me if I'm reading this wrong, is that minus 254,000?
No, you're reading it correctly, but I think we ought to do a little bit more research to get the detail of what represents that cut, whether it's the funding sources that represent that reaction.
Okay, I mean, because that, that's a pretty significant cut in smoking education. I mean, so I think we, I think we should know what impact that's going to have on your ability to, to promote in that area if we're short 254,000, if that's the result of less funding from the state, but-
Definitely. We will, we will look into this and get back to you about, about that specific item. I will say that, as you look at our budget books overall, and I don't know about this specific item, but you will see a lot of, there are some areas that it looks like we're taking a giant loss. I mean, HIV in particular, if you look, there are, there's a loss of a federal grant, there's a, but it's compensated for by something else that may not be named the same thing. So this may be the case, but we will look into that. And I cannot agree with you more. I mean, I think this is another area where it's not top of mind the way that overdoses are, right? I mean, we think about overdose and addiction all the time, but this is another form of addiction that it's critical for us to address. And we're talking about the entire future of our youth, that we know that kids who are, who start by the time that they're 18 are much more likely to be adult smokers.
Councilman Dorsey? Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'll just echo much of the sentiments of my colleagues here. You guys are great. As a former drug user and recovered alcoholic sober for 15 years, I really appreciate the work in these kind of focus areas that you do. As the son of a public health nurse who is ride or die for nursing, nursing instruction, and who worked her entire career in East Baltimore with seniors and really people of all ages in, in community health nursing, I really appreciate the, the work that the department does to, to improve the lives of people in the communities who need your services the most. I want to ask about transportation, because there's a link, there's a known link between transportation and active lifestyle and air quality and a number of factors. I just got an email this week from the American Heart Association that it has, through a new initiative and partnership of some sort, identifies policy change around transportation as one of their five core initiatives or focuses for improving health and heart condition. And I know that, and this is, this is an issue for people of all ages, right? And I know that in the past, the Health Department has received and distributed grant funding, run programs, where we were doing things just like paying people to walk and encourage other people in their communities to walk. And I think that's great. I've al, I've always thought, maybe that money to encourage people to walk temporarily, if that grant would have allowed it, maybe it would have been better to be able to put that money into creating safer walking conditions for people permanently. More than 90% of Baltimore City is non-ADA compliant, and so we have conditions that actually deter people from having an active, healthy lifestyle where they are safe from bodily harm in the communities where they live. And so, my, and, and also, so one more element to this is that I know that Chicago's complete streets policy was developed through grant funding, through their Health Department, through their Health in All Policies 2.0 initiative, and that their Health Department has been an integral part of, of cultivating a vision for more active transportation throughout Chicago. And so I guess, and, and the Health Department is good about tracking data. And I've said before, you're the only agency that stood in front of us here last year and talked about race equity through policy and outcomes. No other agency talked about that at all. And so, I know that you track conditions and outcomes in different communities and disparities that exist in that respect. Does the Health Department have the capacity to collaborate with the Transportation Department in helping to identify areas in which transportation improvements that would, that would encourage and support a more active, healthy lifestyle, that would improve chronic obesity, chronic asthma, and other things that exist in communities, helping people of all ages to be more active where they live? And do you have the capacity to help seek out and hopefully acquire grant funding to help be able to target that? If DOT is saying, we have five different places that we think that we're going to resurface and do streetscaping on, and I would love for the Health Department to be able to say, of those five areas, these are the two that, if it were up to us, we would prioritize, because that's where we know chronic asthma, chronic obesity, and sedentary lifestyles among people who are transit-dependent, and, you know, do you have the capacity to help target strategically other agencies' investments to maximize outcomes across a broader range of issues?
Councilman Dorsey, you speak my language exactly about the social determinants, right? Health in all policies is something that we talk about. And I was actually, I was at a meeting yesterday where we were speaking about how health necessarily ties into all these other issues, but not all elected leaders, but you see the tie between health and education, or between health and transportation. And I'm really lucky to work with the City Council under Council President Young's direction that really understands how everything is, is related, and how integral health and health data are to everything else. So, the question about data, absolutely. I mean, we, this is the bread and butter of what we do. There aren't always metrics for what we need, right? I mean, a lot of times, we get requests for how many children have mental illness, or how many children suffer from trauma. I mean, we may not always have the answers, but what we can do is, we find what are good proxies for that information. And we also recognize that our information, always, we target, as you mentioned, disparities, because it's not important, it's not, I should say, it's not sufficient, not an important, it's not sufficient for us to only focus on health without addressing the specific disparities that we're trying to, to overcome through the, the race equity inclusion lens. To a question about grants, grant funding nowadays with the federal climate, as we spoke about, is more and more challenging. That said, I'm sure there are grants. We have not yet looked into grant possibilities for what, what can be done around transportation and health, but that's something that I would certainly be happy to explore with you, and because our agency is all about collaboration, of course, with, with Director Porcel and direct, and the Department of Transportation, too.
And you have the capacity, the resources to be able to do that, that seeking, that writing, that solicitation of grant funding, and to be able to really execute the work of collaboratively identifying places where transportation investment can improve outcomes?
The latter part of your question for data and figuring out which, as you said, if there were five neighborhoods, what are the two neighborhoods or one neighborhood that we would specifically target? The answer is yes. We, that's the bread and butter of what we do, is finding these outcomes and identifying these outcomes and saying which data points will, will help us to figure out the answers, the hot spotting, right, the targeting that we're looking for. In terms of seeking out grants, it's a tricky question. We, we are able to proactively seek grant funding in the health field. So we would be able to look at anything within Department of Health and Human Services, federal level, state level, private foundations that maybe Department of Transportation may not know about, right? Because they are located in transportation sources. We would look at our counterparts within, within health. If it's going beyond the reach of health and with the funding would go to another agency, the lead for it cannot be health by nature of how grant applications work. And so we would certainly, we have the capacity to collaborate and to provide our expertise as health experts and as data sources, the writing of those grants, because there are such different requirements for different types of grants. I mean, I would not be able to write a grant for, for, you know, Department of Labor, or Department of Transportation on the national level, because we just don't, we don't know how, we don't have the technical expertise to do it. But we will do everything we can on the health side to provide the necessary data and the, the health justification for why a complete streets work is so important.
I'll follow up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we have 10 more minutes left, and I'm committed to, I'm trying my best to go back through. Before I come to Councilwoman Middleton, I wanted to just briefly return to LEAD, and for those at home, it's law enforcement assistant diversion. I couldn't recall the, the amount earlier, but, because I inquired. So to expand the pilot program would be an additional $235,000 to, to do another site. And I think that's maybe two caseworkers and a peer counselor or something. And so I agree with, I think, Councilman Scott and Councilman Costello said earlier, we really should be looking to expand it. I think that we could probably look at the data and show the effect, positive effect in the election and market area, but we really should be looking to how we can expand this into other communities. And matter of fact, we probably should be, trying to be thinking creatively how we can work with other entities in the community to, to, I guess, mimic or replicate what LEAD has, even if we don't have the additional funding to continue to expand beyond the one, one more site. I think we can, we can replicate what LEAD does by using our other partners in the community. So I don't think 235,000 is too much to expand a program that we know is having tremendous impact. So, Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. First, I share many of Councilwoman Clark's comments on the retirees, adults, aging population in the city, and also want to give kudos to the leadership and team effort of Deputy Commissioner Tang has really been working hard, and she has really put together an energized commission that, you know, is, you're going to start to see changes in the city. I can just feel the new members on the commission and their enthusiasm, and the new Director of Social Services, and there's representation from Raccoon Parks and Housing, and there's, and a lot of private sector people that are really enthusiastic about making changes and moving forward. So, on that note, I, my next, I guess the next information is about performance measures that are in the budget book. And the first one is under, I guess it's page 243, under Health Service 721, Senior Centers. And basically, the performance measures listed, I mean, list both the number of participants and the number of unduplicated individuals, and I just suggest in the future budget books, can you include a footnote explaining what unduplicated mean? Just a definition of that. And then also, on page 246, under Health Service 722, Administration Care, there's no performance measures for this service. So, and I think that's important, I guess, to just keep the, the care department, per se, moving forward. So, we need to think about what performance metrics you should use to evaluate performance. So, kind of, go ahead. You want to make a comment on that?
Just a point of clarification. The Administration Care Service represents essentially the administrative side of care. So essentially, we have an admin for the Department Service 715, and also the administration for caring agent services. Essentially, that represents all of the, the, the back office administrative, administrative staff for caring aging services.
Okay. You might want to put a little footnote as a reminder for that as well. And then lastly, page 252, Health Service 724, Direct Care and Support Planning. The fifth measure is, or says, the number of senior assistant living group home subsidy participants that transitioned into a nursing home. Should this metric still be reported? Because it has zero for, you know, FY, I think it's FY '18, FY '19. How are you gonna, what's going on with that?
Councilwoman Middleton, I am going to defer to our Chief of Client Services to answer this question, but there has been several changes to the subsidy housing program, and you might be on the right track in terms of whether or not this is the best performance measure, but-
Okay.
And if we can answer this question as succinctly as possible, I know there's maybe two or more questions.
Good morning. The goal is to-
Come on up to the mic. Oh, you have them. I didn't hear you.
Good morning, everyone, Councilmembers.
That's better, okay.
The goal is to maintain individuals in the community and to divert institutional placement in nursing homes, which is why we had the zero metric. But it may be a measure that we may can take out, because we have increased the number of senior assisted living housing providers.
Okay. Thank you. And then on, on that note, overall, just comment quickly, I'm going to say, about the, you know, our senior centers and so on. And I'd just like to say that, and to my colleagues, really start looking at and helping to find partners out there that would work with our senior centers. The Zeta Center has just been a wonderful example of, of a partnership in keeping our senior centers going. They have been effective now for over 10 years. They have been effective now for over 10 years, and it's just a true example of, you know, how we can keep active adults moving. And, you know, I'm just so happy that I have that partnership in, as an example, with, you know, within a very impoverished area that is reaching out to a whole big population in the Northwest. So, just kind of keep that in mind, and also, if there are organizations out there that would like to partner with the senior center, please let the Health Department know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Middleton. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair for my colleagues. You guys noticed that I did not ask the Health Commissioner my equity question, because I already knew the answer, that yes, they do work through a lens of equity. Dr. Wen, can we go back to my colleague's comment around reversing overdoses? And, Dr. Long, do we spend any city general fund money on the overdose reversing?
We do.
Do you know how much we spend?
I can give you the, we will look it up and find you the exact number. The number, so, in this regard, the number is challenging. We were asked recently by some reporters about this as well, and here's the reason why the number is challenging. We, as the Health Department, we oversee the naloxone programs for our city, but we also work closely with VHSB, we work with Healthcare for the Homeless, and other groups that help us to distribute it. We also get the funding from a number of sources, because frankly, we need more of this medication, so whoever wants to fund it is funding it. We get some from state, there's state pass-through from the federal government, there's some rollover dollars that's used to do it. We even got donations and private foundations, so, but we will get you the exact number when it comes to funding from city general funds.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm done, sir.
We've been joined by Councilman Bullock from the 9th District. Being that there are no further questions, thank you so much, Dr. Wen. I think that it goes without saying, and my colleagues have already stated, that your agency is without peer, not only in this city, but throughout the nation, as a leader in public health. Thank you to your entire team. This panel is in recess for three minutes while we prepare for the next panel, which will be on law enforcement coordination led by the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Thank you.